Welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and nineteen Board of Commissioners meeting. Apologize for being a few minutes late here, some other business to take care of. We're very privileged this morning to have Reverend Laurie Etheridge from the First United Methodist Church of Marietta to lead us in our invocation. And then, uh-oh, a young man from Cobb County Police Department leaves on our place of allegiance. So that, those who are in the neighborhood, please stand.
Good morning Commissioners, other public servants, and distinguished and honored guests. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Kind and gracious God, we come together this morning acknowledging our common life. We thank you for the blessings we enjoy in this community, and we are grateful for those in our midst who work tirelessly for the benefit of Cobb County. Through the combined efforts of these civic and community leaders, the social ills which plague so many other counties and communities are exposed and overcome. In this gathering, may we continue to nurture that public spirit which respects human dignity and is sensitive to human need. Remind us all that there's a difference between public service and personal ambition. Help us to honor the public trust above private gain. And whether we are in government or industry, in healthcare or in commerce, we ask that you will guide us in our decision-making so that our policies and practices are compassionate and just. Bind us together for the common good and help us to stand, to speak, and to work for the betterment of our community. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you both. We're starting out our program this morning. We have some, we have some presentations this morning. And let me get to the right part of the book here. First one will be done with Clarissa Burrow.
Good morning, everyone. As most of you know, September seventeenth is Constitution Day. And I would like to ask the Barbara Hickey Foundation for Constitution Day representatives that are here and the Daughters of the American Revolution to come up for these two proclamations. These ladies work tirelessly to spread the word about our most important document, the Constitution of the United States. And September seventeenth is the actual Constitution Day and is the two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary. And the Barbara, Barbara Hickey Foundation for Constitution Day, as it's called now, was actually started, um, ten years ago? Over ten years ago, with Cobb Republican Women. And Barbara's passing this year, earlier this year. She was a dear friend of all of ours, and now it's with the foundation. And the committee still distributes the Constitution books to fourth, fourth graders in the Cobb and Marietta City Schools. So, one proclamation is for the Barbara Hickey Foundation. And I'm trying to see which one is which. That one's for you. And these ladies, the Daughters of the American Revolution, also promote our Constitution throughout the county and country. So, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about what they're up to.
I'm Ann Amy, Chapter Region of the Fielding Lewis Chapter in Marietta. It's a happy coincidence that we're wearing red, white, and blue. And we promote historic preservation, education of children, and patriotic activities. And I associate, I'm the Chapter Region, and this is our first Vice Region, Linda Luthus.
Good morning. One of the important activities of DAR is recognizing our patriots who sacrificed life and their fortunes to help this country become established. And the Constitution is an amazing document that has endured for these many years.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Carol Palmer. I have been a DAR member for about five years now. I love DAR because it gives me an opportunity to go out into the community and help with different events, especially the Constitution Week. And I have visited schools to deliver packages for education and the, on the Constitution and to help our children learn more about our country. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Emily Hewitt. I'm the co-chair of the Constitution Week Committee from Fielding Lewis Chapter. And we have distributed twenty-four packets to Cobb County Schools. And also, we presented certificates for a group of immigrants who were taking a class on citizenship. And also, we plan to do a talk at Osborne High School in the Special Ed Department, which I don't think has ever been done. And we will continue with our activities throughout the month for Constitution Week. So, everybody, on the seventeenth, which is next Tuesday, take a moment and just be happy that you have a wonderful document that sets up the framework for our government.
I'd also like to recognize Marcia Stemey on the end here, who double dips in her time to be both in our chapter and in this other organization. We thank you for your time.
We have a couple of duplicates. Emily, too.
Good morning. I'm Roseanne Hall, and I'm the Chair of the Barbara Hickey Children's Fund for Constitutions. And Barbara started this prior to her untimely death. And she loved it so much that she kept this going for over ten years. She has committed to always being able to provide constitutions to the fourth graders or fifth. And we have committed to the fourth grade. So, in the Cobb and Marietta Schools, we delivered twenty-five hundred constitutions to the kids in the school system that cost a dollar apiece. So, that's twenty-five hundred dollars. Our initiatives, our initiative is to be able to start raising money for next year so we can do this as much or better and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. I'm so happy to be here today. My name is Rose Wing, and I enjoy every time I have the opportunity to deliver the Constitution to our schoolchildren. It's a joy to deliver them and see the bright eyes. And this year, we had the opportunity, but we actually didn't have the funds. But our high schools had reached to Pope High School requesting constitutions. So, they're eager and they're wanting to learn more about the wonderful document that gives us our freedoms, the Constitution.
Hi, I'm Marcia Stemey, and I'm a retired Georgia history teacher. So, getting the word out on this Constitution is really, really important to me. I see what the eighth graders know and don't know. And so, I've been really delighted to be both on the Fielding Lewis Committee and pass out Constitution and then also on the Barbara Hickey Foundation and pass out Constitution. So, it's really important that we get the word out to our children so they know what their rights are and what our Constitution stands for. Thank you.
Thank you, lady, for all your efforts on behalf of the Constitution of the U.S. We're gonna get a picture. Now, I'd like to show y'all a very impressive video and then bring up the star of the show. And once you see this video, I want you all to go online and vote for Cinder.
Alright Cinder, ready to go teach your kids about fire safety? Come on. Time to get ready for bed. And then Ember smelled the smoke, and she ran from room to room, barking to warn everyone. Good night, Cinder. See you in the morning. Closing the bedroom door at night is an easy and very effective way to increase your chance of survival in the case of a fire. This simple act can slow the spread of flames and smoke through the home while you're sleeping. That means you have more time to hear the smoke alarm, wake up, and escape. So, be like Cinder here and close before you doze.
Erin, would you and Cinder like to come show us some tricks? The Cobb County Fire Department is in a contest to win grant money. So, if you watch the video online, and it's in my newsletter, it's on our webpage, I hope, as of today, maybe. And vote for Cinder, because we want all the grant money we can get for this amazing dog here. She's waiting for treats. So, Erin Sawkill is our firefighter engineer. And you'll normally find him at the Safety Village with Cinder, educating kids on fire safety at the Safety Village. And I believe Allison is here from the Safety Village, too, if you wanna come up. Allison Carter, our director over there. So, you wanna tell us a little bit about Cinder? I've been trying to get her to a commission meeting to introduce her, and she broke her leg, like, as soon as you got her almost. And so, we had to wait for her to heal up. But as you can see, she has plenty of energy and she's very smart.
So, this is Cinder. Cinder's a ten-month-old purebred Dalmatian. She's my second Dalmatian that I've had that I've trained to do this. Shh, and she wants to go somewhere. Cinder, let's see here. Oh, sure. Let's see here. She's in training to become a certified therapy dog. So, what that'll mean is that we'll be able to do visits at schools and hospitals. Currently, she's working at the Safety Village. We teach dog bite prevention to second graders. We teach them about, hey, no, say, yeah. I gotta give her the treat. We teach them about, you know, don't pull their tails, don't pull their ears, don't run away from a stray dog. If you're gonna pet somebody else's dog, ask before you pet the dog. And so, we do all that, and then we've started making these videos. Cinder, come here.
Come here.
You better take her.
Hey, Cinder, hey, stop, stop, sit. There we go. There you go. So, yeah, I've had her since she was about eight weeks old, and it's Cinder.
So, to tell you a little bit, we are, to have Cinder a part of the Safety Village and to, you know, as you know, the Safety Village is all hands-on, interactive learning. So, when Animal Services came to us four years ago to ask us to bring bite prevention in because they saw a need and a rise with the dog bites of eighteen and younger, Sawkill had the vision to have Ember, his first Dalmatian, and now Cinder, to do that. And it is, it is truly remarkable to see the children, to be able to see what a scared dog looks like, because he'll tuck her tail and pull her ears back. He'll say, "What's a happy dog look like?" And they'll say, "Cinder." But then also, to be able to, how to approach a dog, that's really the most important piece, is how do you approach a dog if you're on the street? Because what everybody wants to do is go up to her and go, "Cinder, you're so cute, you're so sweet." But actually teaches them, you have to ask your parents' permission, and then ask kids' permission, and then ask Cinder's permission. And so, it's really great to be able to have a live dog, to be able to do that and show them with that. But with regards to the UL grant that we have, UL put out nationwide a opportunity for anybody to put a video out there to promote the Close Before You Doze campaign. And so, all the videos that are online, you can go on and watch them. And so, of course, the first thing that popped into our minds was to have Cinder a part of that. And so, Erin and Cinder, and then Steve Bennett, which is a photographer through the Fire Department, worked tirelessly to train her to close the door upon command. And so, as you can see, it's a precious video. We're now fourth in place, but, so please go on. We'll have the link up on the Safety Village website today. But the opportunity is, is that the total grand prize is twenty-five thousand dollar grant that will go back toward safety education. And so, right now, we're in fourth. The top eight will go on to the final voting through UL. And then, on October first, the winners will be announced. So, top winner will get twenty-five thousand, and then fifteen thousand, and on down from there. So, we're shooting for the grand prize. So, anyway, so thank you so much.
Vote early and often.
Yes, it closes on the fifteenth at six o'clock, so we'll send it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Oh, we gotta get a picture. Come on, Cinder. I had a Dalmatian for fifteen years, but she was never this small.
Now Commissioner Ron. I'm not sure how you follow that. Alright, Pam and Linda, you wanna come up? They, too, have received training, not the same kind. Theirs, I think, was a little bit harder. Yes, and you know, you hear the Commissioners and the Chairman talk all the time about the tremendous employees that we have here at the county. I have the opportunity to tell you why. With me is Pam Wilford, a senior buyer, and Linda Drayton, a buyer. And they've both been notified that they successfully completed requirements for designation as Georgia Certified Purchasing Associates. Now, for those of you that have no idea what that means, me being one of them, no. What that means is that they, they know how to spend your dollars wisely and not pay excessively. And, you know, they're in the purchasing department, and so, it's a huge honor. The program is offered through Georgia State Purchasing Division and requires successful completion of coursework and certification assessments, so that means testing. The certification process demonstrates a high level of commitment for Pam and Linda, and the knowledge received through the process has resulted in them being more effective public purchasers. So, what that tells you is that we have the best working for the county. So, congratulations. Clarissa Cupid.
Good morning. May those join me who are here for September being National Literacy Month. Thank you. Hi Roger. Hi Irene, you guys can stand front and center. Good morning. Today, we have opportunity to recognize an initiative here in our state and in the county to support reading amongst our youth. Whereas First Readers was chartered by the State of Georgia in nineteen ninety-nine as the result of the efforts of Georgia resident Robin First. It is a four-star charity and ranked number one among reading and literacy charities in the state by Charity Navigator. And whereas a community action team was formed in two thousand and eighteen to establish First Readers in Cobb County, and it launched on January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, our community has worked together to grow the program, reaching more than five hundred children under the age of five who receive books each month to build literacy skills. More than eighteen hundred free, age-appropriate books with literacy support materials have been mailed to Cobb County children since the program's launch. And whereas research shows, when adults read aloud to children from birth, it promotes increased language development, brain development, and a better understanding of language, which leads to literacy success. The First Readers of Cobb County program is making a difference in our community as children are more ready to learn when entering kindergarten. And whereas September is National Literacy Month, a time to encourage all young people to read and help them to see how school, community, and the world are connected. The Community Action Team also wants to expand the reach of First Readers by promoting and supporting the Adopt a Reader program so more children receive books and families receive information to support language development. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby celebrate National Literacy Month, and we encourage community members to support all literacy efforts, including reading to children, visiting our public libraries, and expanding access to books through the Adopt a Reader program. This the tenth day of September, two thousand and nineteen.
You're welcome. Okay. My name is Roger Vest. I'm the Chairman of the Community Action Team for Cobb County. And I've known about this organization for a number of years, and I love the simplicity of it. Access to books is a huge, huge help. If a child is not reading at or near level by the time they enter kindergarten, they're already behind. And we know about the whole focus on third-grade reading level. And if you're behind at third grade, you're four times more likely to drop out and so many more times likely to fail moving forward. And so, our goal is to, we mail a book every day, every month, from birth to age five. Any child can sign up. It's three dollars a month. It's simple. Thirty-six dollars, you can adopt a reader for a year. Since January, we started off, we had fifty kids a month. We're now up over six hundred. And with the state organization being in Madison, Georgia, they pay all the administrative stuff. It's all volunteers here. So, I would venture to say ninety-nine percent of every fund, every dollar that's raised in Cobb County goes to buy a book for a Cobb County kid. So, we're looking to expand that. And the statistic that really spoke to me is that middle and upper-middle income kids, on average, have thirteen age-appropriate books in their home per child. Lower-income children have, on average, one book for every three hundred children. In other words, they don't. And if you don't have access, there's so many other things that just lack. And so, here's a simple program to make sure our kids have access. And our goal, there are forty-eight thousand children under the age of five in Cobb County. Eight thousand of those live in poverty. That's who we're targeting. That's who we wanna reach, and we feel like it's an accessible goal.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Roger. I'm Irene Barton, Executive Director of the Cobb Collaborative. And as the local partner representing the Georgia Family Connection Partner, we are also the local point of contact for the Get Georgia Reading campaign. And out of the four pillars that support the campaign, access is one of those pillars. Access to quality, age-appropriate reading material is so important in that language development and language nutritional development for our youngest and most vulnerable children. So, we are pleased to be a part of the Community Action Team and support getting all So we are pleased to be a part of the Community Action Team and support getting all children in Cobb County reading, and ultimately, reading proficiently by the end of third grade, leading to great outcomes in life.
To make a donation. Had to do that, had to do that, had to do that. Go to the Cobb Community Foundation website, and we have funds set up for every city in Cobb County. So if you wanted to go to Ostel, if you wanted to go to Marietta, if you wanted to go to Acworth, we got you covered. So Cobb Community Foundation's been a wonderful partner with us, and they handle all that money. And so we're hoping to hit 1,000 kids by the end of the year. And with your help, we can do that.
This is truly a worthy cause, and I appreciate both of you for being involved in this, because you two are involved in everything. But something like this really helps to set our children up to have a great foundation for learning. So I hope we can go out there and sign up till we can donate to this worthy cause. Can you give them a round of applause for their efforts, please? Thank you.
Good seeing you. Good morning. You look great. Hey, Irene. Good morning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, and also thank you, those who are supporting this really terrific cause. One other interesting statistic is that for the percentage of children who get to third grade and cannot read at the third-grade level, that is the current percentage of our prison population in Georgia. So just want you to know, there's a link between what Roger's saying here and Irene doing here, trying to support these young kids to be at the appropriate level when they get into kindergarten. This is a terrific program. I could not say more great things about what they're doing here. Okay, with that, we're on to a public comment.
Yes, sir. We have three sign up today. Mr. David Birkenbine's the first one.
Welcome back, David.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm going to have to read this pretty fast. The main difference between prohibited and restricted prohibitions, restricted are used in references, limitations, and preventions. However, they cannot be used interchangeably, and there's a direct distinction in between them. Prohibited is used when there's talking about an impossibility. Mr. Chairman, you have stepped up. You have to step up and have the law you swore to be uphold, enforced. The law is outdoor burning, Article 7. Why we do not want to act upon this is beyond me. All codes, when called to be enforced, the enforcer of the code educates, notifies, and gives warning of citations. Mr. Chairman, I ask you, why not in Article 7, outdoor burning, is this being done? We had no problem enforcing this code when we first wrote it. But like all things in time, people are knowing the law. Even the VOC, the law turns into war stories, and things change. And if people don't question or call him out, the law as written is lost in interpretations and false tales. This is why the state, this is why I state that Article 7, outdoor burning, is abused, ignored, and unenforceable because the interpretation that dictates other collective will will not will and not the law. Let's have all the commissioners educate their citizens in their new newsletter each month on a procedures and reporting smoke and the rights of each individual under Article 7. Do all of you think we can do this in our newsletters and make it a regular topic until we get resolved? To keep Cobb beautiful is just, just isn't trash, water, cutting grass, or keeping neighborhoods nice. It is enjoyment of your property and clean breathable air. It is also clean breathable air for you being able to open your windows anytime you want. To enjoy your property outside, also enjoy your air quality inside your home, free of smoke and smell. This is the most important of all, since we spend most of our time in the home. No matter how tight your house is sealed from smoke, it will still enter. And we have it right here. The article promotes safety. I don't know why we can't, you know, I don't know why we can't do the safety. I don't know what I'm missing here. And here, people want to say, they want to give different directions. Outdoor burning, that's what outdoor burning is. Ster genetics, everybody's having a fit of ster genetics. These hair puts out your carbons, your cancer-causing deals, right next to you, and then it lays on the ground. Particle 2.5 pollution gets deep in your lungs, just like the firefighter said when, on the public speaking. You smell it, it's in you. But now let's go to, let's go to the euphemisms. Euphemisms are most used to hide more accurate descriptions of behavior or status in order to avoid conflict or injure someone who might be offended or hurt. If they fail to communicate anything meaningful while claiming to do so, George Orwell called it newspeak or doublespeak. Too often euphemisms are used to make bad behaviors appear to look good, and that's a good example right here, right at the bottom, that they added to the medical burn ban. And allow one to avoid responsibility, accountability. They are interpreted according to one's personal wishes. The Humpty Dumpty told Alice in the Lewis Carroll classic, "When I use a word, it means just what I chose it to mean." Neither more nor less. The English language, once conveyed meaning, properly written and spoken, it suggested that one educated and capable of conversing in polite company today, is often used to cover up true intentions. Consider how often racism is misapplied. Our model language and culture, one dare not suggest anyone has done anything wrong unless negative labels be attached to them. Such labels are unevenly applied, and the political left often remains, retains them to attack the right. But should the right seek to use words to accurately describe the conduct or the status of another, they are condemned as old-fashioned, rigid, judgmental, or worse. And we need to fix it. I don't know why we can't fix it. I don't need another letter from the board saying, "Thank you, David," and all this. I want a letter saying, "We're going to attack this problem." I want a letter saying that we're going to have the enforcers enforce the problem. How much more planer can you get? And here's the medical burn ban areas that we have in Cobb County. I mean, we're here. We're here to stay. If people don't want this law, then change it. Do like I'm trying, had to do back in 2017. Come up here, speak, and change it. Or enforce it, either one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birkenbine. The next public speaker is Kim Hill.
Good morning. I'm Kim Peace Hill, and I live in Kennesaw. I didn't know I was going to be speaking this morning, so I didn't prepare anything. So I guess I'm just going to speak from my gut. I am the founder and the president of a nonprofit in Cobb County that supports law enforcement in the area, and we're moving into other counties. But I also encourage community support. And I've been hearing a lot, I have heard a lot, from local law enforcement officers in regards to their pay and their benefits. And as you all know, we had and are still in a crisis when it comes to the loss of our officers. They're continuing to leave. I know that Steve Gaynor, the president of the Internal Order of Police, has been up here quite a number of times in his talk to you all, and we finally did get some action in regards to resolving this issue, but it is still the genuine overall consensus that nothing's going to happen, even though we've been assured there will be a step in grade pay, a plan put in place, and a good one that is acceptable will be presented. The reason I came this morning was originally because I saw a story, and I said, "I'm out of touch, and I need to find out what the heck is going on." And this particular story has to do with our new lead counsel over at the county attorney's office and the pay raise or the pay scale that was determined. I sent you all an email, so I don't need to go through it all again. You know how I feel about that. But in sitting and waiting for my turn to speak, I decided to jot down a few thoughts. When it comes to taking care of our public safety officers, all I can say is I hope that this board will press on and work to come up with a real step-in-grade plan that will be acceptable to the command staff, as well as the officers that work under them, PD, fire, everyone. Instead of throwing money at ridiculous last-minute agenda items that are brought to your attention, I don't think we need to be reclassifying employee positions in certain offices and giving huge raises to people while we've got this crisis still in place. I don't think that we need to be starting outreach, community outreach programs for our DA's office. First of all, that's not their, that's not their job. We do not need to throw money at the DA's office so that they can go out and build community relationships. It's not their job. That money and all the money that's being thrown at ridiculous requests and last-minute agendas needs to be refocused and put toward our public safety. We are now down, Lissy, I wrote it down. We're down 104 with the police department, and that's not counting the recruits that we've got still in the academy. If you want to take those out of the equation, we're down more like 130, 135. And although information coming out of the sheriff's office is a little more difficult to get, it looks like we're down around 100 deputies, and they're still leaving. They're still leaving because they've lost faith. I know that I've heard through our public safety, a couple of people that I know that do tell me things, that a couple of ideas have been thrown their way, and they're not, they're not going to work. You guys, please, pay attention, keep moving forward with the work to improve the pay and benefits for our public safety. And please do not throw money at ridiculous requests for last-minute agendas after our budget has already been passed, approved, and is done. This has got to stop. This county and these taxpayers cannot continue to blindly have their money thrown at every request that comes across your desk. I know, I know you know what I'm talking about. So I'm going to leave it at that, and I will see you at the next commissioners' meeting if I'm in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Delancy.
Monica? There you are. Come on up. Sure. Yeah. I've never known you to be shy.
No, I thought y'all were waiting to do something, so I was waiting on you guys.
Yeah, no. You, uh...
How's everybody today?
Good morning. Good to see you.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. First, I would like to say Happy Grandparents' Day. This past Sunday was Grandparents' Day, and I know this week in schools, a lot of schools have planned to eat lunch with the grandparents or surrogate grandparents, so I wanted to say that first. I want to also just thank Commissioner Cupid and Commissioner Boyce for your continued support for the Riverside community, not only just being, listening, but coming to the area and making sure that repairs are being done, and attending our meetings in the area, as well as taking time to take residents to other apartment complexes if they chose to want to move. But thank you for doing that, Commissioner Cupid and Commissioner Boyce. But I do have to remind you that 40% of households in Cobb County are classified as economically disadvantaged. And how do I know that number? Because the number from the Cobb County School District for the number of families that are approved for free and reduced lunch. So 40% of households in Cobb County are classified as economically disadvantaged. So every district, District 1, 2, 3, and 4, have families that are economically disadvantaged. So it's just not a South Cobb issue or a District 4, District 2 issue. It's everyone's issue. It's just that in District 4 and District 2, you have higher numbers because that's where most of your multi-family housing is located. And with that, housing costs, even in those areas, even though it's lower, it's not still affordable. A lot of our families are paying more than 50% of their income on rent, and that's rent for older apartments that are charging $900 a month. So you have families that are only bringing home maybe $1,400 a month that are struggling to pay $900, and they're living in areas where they're thinking that the rent is going to be lower, but it's not because private entities are not required to keep their rents at 30% of your income. So in theory, if you want to, you know, say, so those applicants that qualify, I'm sorry, those same residents that qualify for free reduced lunch, if they cannot feed their families, they definitely cannot keep up with the rent. Eviction affects black women the most. Let me just tell you why I say this, because when I go to court on Fridays at 9:00 at 1:00 p.m., it's black women that's in the courtroom. It's black women that's there just struggling to pay $800 a month rent. They're not there for the $1,000 or $1,200 rent. They're there for $800. And Matthew Desmond wrote this book here, Evicted, and this book came out, I want to say, 2016, and he has some astonishing research with this as well. So I ask that there be a task force formed to address the housing needs of everyone. Teachers and public servants, they're struggling to keep up with rents or housing costs in Cobb that they live in, Paul and Douglas, you know, Cherokee County. So therefore, let me just close with this. I thank you for your time, but let's just remember, we're all in this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
That concludes our public speakers. Chairman.
All right. On to consent agenda, and if we'd scroll that on the screen, please. Sure. Okay. Bill? Bookman, are you in the back there? Commissioner Gamble has a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Hi, Bill. I know we were emailing on Agenda Item Number 25 specifically, which is where the TAVT proceeds will be gone, will be put to a bond fund. And in your email exchange, I learned that it's actually going to go to the Parks Bond.
That's correct.
That money that is put into the Parks Bond debt from the TAVT, can that be used to purchase additional parkland?
No, ma'am, it cannot. It can only be used to pay the debt service on the existing bonds.
And in paying that off, does that open up any additional funding for parks with the 2008 Parks Bond?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Some discussions? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0. Thank you. All right, on to regular. And our first one, I believe, is District Attorney. Welcome out, District Attorney.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Jose. Thank you. I'm here this morning to ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize and reclassify the position of Administrative Coordinator to that of Chief of Staff. We have, it would be effective from today's date, September 10, 2019, and we ask that you also authorize the corresponding budget to that reclassification.
Okay. So with that, I make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Actually...
Yeah, go ahead. Sure.
Just for clarifications.
Yes.
Is this a salary increase, or is this just taking the current salary from... Is this a salary increase or is this just taking the current salary from when she was in the Solicitor's Office, correct?
Magistrate Court.
Magistrate Court.
Correct.
And putting it into?
There is not a penny increase for her position.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call a question. Passes 5 to 0. And thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Okay, Erica, you have the same timeframe that Ms. Holmes had.
Okay. We'll try, we'll try this. Well, with 19 items, we'll try and squeeze that in there. So we'll go really quick. So our first item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Factory Shoals Road at Harmony Leland and Clay Elementary Schools, Phase 1.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, sir. Our second item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Acworth-DW Road at Jim Owens Road-Marshall Church Road intersection.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Cherokee Street.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Mapleton Parkway Pedestrian Improvements, Phase 1.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that circumstances, the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by Declaration of Taking under OCGA 32-3-4, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on New Macklin Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvement Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, RSPLOST, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions for the 2016 RSPLOST Transportation Improvement Program budget and schedule provided under separate cover.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Masana Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $632,453 for bridge rehabilitation on Wendy Hill Road over Rottenwood Creek.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises, DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling, in an amount not to exceed $169,577.50 for Phase 6 demolition of four buildings located at Arlington Park at Wildwood Apartments for construction of Wendy Hill Road to Cherronwell Road Connector.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $26,335.97 for drainage system repairs on Riverview Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $9,281.93 for sidewalk repairs on Pear Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Masana Construction, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $191,297.68 per Cumberland Area Interstate Signs.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 final to the contract with Balding Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $261,238.90 for thoroughfare improvements on Cedar Crest Road.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $31,171.17 for Wesley Chapel Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 final to the contract with Balding Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $55,794.85 for schools on improvements on John Ward Road at Irwin Road, Chatham Hill Road Elementary School.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 final to the contract with Brassville Gory LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $13,239.66 for construction of Wendy Ridge Parkway Bridge pedestrian improvements.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a final closeout on various contracts, a total savings to various projects in the amount of $786,341.47 for completed projects in the 2005, 2011, and 2016 RSPLOST Transportation Improvement Program funds and the Capital Project Fund, and authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions.
Commissioner Otte?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Work Authorization 3 to the Consolidated Contract with Atkins North America, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $19,827,915 for program management services to include program management assistance, preconstruction services, right-of-way services, and complete construction management services for the 2005, 2011, and the 2016 RSPLOST Transportation Improvement Programs for the two-year period, January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2021.
Commissioner Otte? I'm making a motion to approve. But I asked Erica, we talked about this yesterday. I know you all know that I had questions about it. Do you bring this up when we talk about Michelle?
The email?
Yeah, the.
I read on it. But yes.
I'm going to let her show these and then, then have a couple comments.
I'm not sure if it's, is it that?
Yes. Yeah. Basically, the stuff you sent me yesterday. Just kind of go through the different things that you showed me.
Okay. So as you look up here, we're talking about the contract with Atkins that oversees our RSPLOST transportation component or their program management team. So up here in, let me make sure I'm telling the right dates. We originally initiated the contract with Atkins. We did an RFP. Atkins North America was selected as the best qualified consultant team to manage our program. Also, when they were selected, we did something a little different. We combined the 2005 and the 2011 programs into the 2016. So if you go back and look at the history, the 2005 was being managed separately. The last agenda item that the Board approved for them extended it out to December of 2015. And also, in the 2011 program, there was an agenda item that extended it out to December of 2015. And then, as we put together our request for proposals for the 2016 program, we decided, DOT decided, that it would be better for one management team to oversee all of the programs. So when we started this program, we set the contract up for four separate potential work authorizations. The first one was Work Authorization 1, which kicked off the 2016 program. And as you can see, it was the first program management contract that had the 2005, 2011, and the 2016 programs combined under one program management team. So the first work authorization has a component for the 2005 at $3.9 million, 2011 at $8.16 million, and the 2016 at $8.7 million. So in 2015, we still had projects that were 2005-related. In 2005, that program, 22 projects were deferred. And then, we had, the Board approved an additional eight to be reinstated. I think that's on this paper. That we had reinstated in July of 2013. So we knew that there were projects in the 2005 that had not been completed that needed either design, right-of-way, construction, utilities, that were going to be included in the amount of work hours needed for the program team for the 2016 RSPLOST selection. So the 2011 program had not been completed either. So we knew that there were hours that were going to be needed for that program to wrap it up also. So in each work authorization that we've had, you can see we've taken hours or dollars, because our dollars have went down, for the 2005 program, 2011 program. And the 2016 is actually ramped up. So the 2005 and 11, you've seen engineering or the preconstruction phase was up, and it's kind of gradually started slowing down. So we've gone into more in the construction phase. In the 2016 program, when we started, the first year, we had $8.7 million allocated to that program for the first two years. The next two years, for the second work authorization, it bumped up to $10.9 million. So we, we started our engineering, you're starting all your early work. So your engineering, survey, utility evaluations to see what's out there. And you're ramping up to begin your design. Some of the programs, some of the projects are smaller, so you're able to get in there pretty quickly, a year. Get in there, design, purchase right-of-way, and construct the project. Some of them take longer. So as you can see, you know, those first two years, wasn't as much money spent on the 16 program, but we were spending on 2011 and 2005, trying to make sure that we're managing those programs and delivering them on budget and as quickly as possible. So as the 2016 has progressed, every two work authorizations that we've brought forward, we've, we've progressed from early preconstruction into our construction phase now. So right now, where we're at in the program in 2005, we have three projects that are in design, three that are in construction. A couple of those are State Route 92. They're not overseen by us, but they are, were identified as projects in '05 that we periodically contact Georgia DOT on, have conversations about. The 2011 program, I think we have three that are in design and three that are in construction, maybe two in construction. Those programs, those projects are wrapping up now. In the 2016, we still have, I think we've delivered 110 projects. So we're about halfway through that one. We are hoping to, we've completed 110 projects out of the 211 projects. So right now, today, we have 54 projects that are in design or preconstruction, 36 projects that are in construction. And then, we have 11 projects that haven't even started yet. And then, we have had 110 that have completely been finished out. So, you know, we still have this work authorization, and we'll have projects that'll continue into the next potential RSPLOST. So, or even from 2020 to 2021 into 2022, 2023 time periods.
All right. Thank you, Erica. Mr. Chairman, the reason I brought this up is this is something that I've had a concern about every year that this comes up. $60 million is a ton of money. We also have program management for Parks and Rec portions of RSPLOST. If you add that amount in, that's another $20 to $25 million. And I just think that it's way too much money. You know, I think that moving forward, especially if there's going to be a new RSPLOST on the ballot in next year, this needs to be addressed. One of the things that Erica and I talked about yesterday as liaison with DOT, since she is kind of driving the RSPLOST, they are actually in the process of writing a new RFP for program management, and she and I are going to sit down and look at the RFP. I have some concerns that, and it was something similar that I saw probably about four, four or five years ago with Cobb Links contracted for the operator, that we had gotten to the point where the RFP was written in such a way that we would only have one bidder. And it costs way too much money. And so what we did was we sat down and we, and I kind of put them, forced them to go in a room and not talk to any vendors or anybody like that, and write an RFP for what they wanted. And that year, we got, I think, three bidders, one of them being the same ones that we had had the year before, but for $3 million less. And so one of the things I look at, I'm doing is, is working on this RFP. I think that we have to work to get this number down, because this is money that's not going towards repaving. I mean, you know, $60 million, that's, that's like a year and a half of repaving. And now, obviously, there is going to be some expense. We don't have the employees to do all this. We do hire some. The law does allow the county to hire some employees if all they do is RSPLOST work and be paid by RSPLOST. But I just think that this is a huge sum of money that's coming out of this RSPLOST that could be done better. And so Erica and I talked about this yesterday, that we're going to, moving forward, first step is to take a look at the RFP that's going to go out and kind of work from there.
Yeah. A couple, a couple thoughts, but I'll let Commissioner Burrow go first. No, fine.
Erica?
Yes, ma'am.
Is with the, still 2005 and 11's RSPLOST projects included in this, aren't, shouldn't they almost be complete with design and construction?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the reason for the jump, I mean, from 19 million to 60 million because of the three RSPLOST components? Or, I'm, I'm talking to Erica.
So the 19 million is just for this work authorization. If you add all three of the work authorizations for this program, that adds up to the 60 million. But one of the, one of the bigger things that I didn't mention that we kind of talked about yesterday was how in the 2005 program, there's still a lot of outstanding issues with right-of-way parcels that are still, bigger parcels that are in, we're still in negotiations that have been, we've had in condemnations. And then, also, our work with our utility companies, Georgia Power. When we have these, these projects, we have an agreement with some of the utility companies, Georgia Power is one of them, where we can agree on that there is a need for the project, and we know what the estimate is to relocate their facilities, if they pay it 100% or if the county pays it 100%. So what we'll do, we'll do a URA, an agreement. And then, as the project's proceeding, or even sometimes the projects have been completed, we have to go back, we're still talking to them, we're going through deed research and trying to figure out who was actually there first. They call it prior rights research, to make sure that, you know, they're, they're going to ask us to fund 100% of it if they think they were there first and they have the rights to that location. But if we feel like they weren't, we have to go in and do the research, and we have to sit down and really negotiate that and work with the county attorney's office and make sure that, you know, we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and not paying for something that, that, that we don't feel is accurate.
But the total has almost doubled each RSPLOST. So are there more projects for 16 that they would be overseeing as opposed to 11 and 5?
So in the '05, there were, let me see. '05 was a six-year RSPLOST, and there were 347 projects in that program.
I'm sorry.
There were 347 projects in the '05 program. Right now, we still have three that are in preconstruction and two that are in construction. And a couple of those are state, state projects that we are involved with, but we're not technically overseeing. But we have conversations with Georgia DOT or some of the cities to figure out what's going on so we can be able to answer to the citizens and the commissioners if they have a call about State Route 92.
And what about 2011 and 16?
So in the 2011 RSPLOST, we have three projects that are in preconstruction and three that are in construction. There was 205 total projects that were named in that program. Now, in that one, we're, we're doing pretty good. Out of the three that are in preconstruction, one's McCullin Parkway sidewalks, which is scheduled to let this fall. Now, that's, we're pulling, I call it twin, and I don't know if that's the right word. That was being done in coordination with the 2016 RSPLOST project, McCullin Parkway at Ben King. So those will go together this fall. We have Lower Roswell Road, which is scheduled for sometime in 2020. That one's a little bit more complicated. It could push later in 2020. There's a lot of right-of-way. It could push later in twenty twenty, there's a lot of right-of-way out there. We've had a lot of.
Yeah, some of these have been delayed too by us.
That one's been delayed. And then we have Woodline Drive sidewalks, which is included in that Lower Roswell project. So those are the projects that are left in design. And then we have the projects that are in construction, which are Gordon Combs sidewalks, we hope will be completed this spring, or spring twenty twenty. Riverview Road, which is scheduled for fall of twenty twenty, and then Sandy Plains, which is December this year. So those are projects that are still in design, construction, but we'll still have utility discussions and any projects that have some outstanding right-of-way that we need to negotiate, that have been, you know, sent to, for, we've requested for condemnations. And I, I don't have that list of where we're at on that twenty eleven.
And what was the total number of projects for sixteen?
So sixteen was two hundred and, um, I'm telling a story, two hundred and eleven total for twenty sixteen. We've completed fifty, no, we've completed a hundred and ten of those.
Yeah.
And we have a breakdown if, and I, that I can send to the board that tells you where we're at with when we originally. So one of the things the project team and, and the county does is, when we have the program, we try and figure out how we're going to deliver it. So we know we need to deliver this many projects every month. So we've got, you know, we've got these spreadsheets that we can keep up with where we're at and what we think. So, um, if you look back, when we did our SLOSS presentation in August, you know, um, we completed a hundred and ten projects, but we plan to have completed sixty-six projects for this program so far. And it's the same thing with construction. We have thirty-six in construction right now, we plan thirty-four. And in design, we, um, we have fifty-four that are in design, and we have planned sixty-six, but we delivered more of those into the construction phase.
But you get her point. You said we had three, somewhere around three hundred projects for the two thousand and five, all right?
Yes, sir.
And the bill was nine point four million dollars.
So I sent it, can you hold on a second?
Yeah, so.
So I don't have all this put together. So when we originally hired the consultant to manage the program in two thousand and five, total dollar amount that has been spent is forty-two point eight million dollars. That was what was spent to that program, for that program management team. However, I didn't break this out. In that, close to a million, a little over a million dollars, was oversight for the nineteen ninety-four tip, along with, um, the two thousand and nine floods. There were dollars that were allocated to that, where they helped us manage some of the flooded, um, emergency work that had to be done out there. So that forty-two point eight plus that nine million dollars is what's been spent on management of the two thousand and five program so far.
So it's fifty-one million dollars roughly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for the two thousand and eleven one, we had, you said we had over two hundred projects?
Yes, sir. So originally, the first that we carried it through December of that twenty fifteen, we had spent the twenty-two point two million, and then we've also spent the eighteen point six.
So that's another, that's forty million. Okay.
Now, that, that had some funds in there that were allocated for the oversight of the Windy Hill corridor that we worked with, and I think it was the school system, I don't. There was a note, there was a note in there, I can, I can pull that.
Okay.
But, but right.
All right, and then for the two thousand and sixteen, we had a little over two hundred projects.
Yes, sir.
And the bill is what?
We've spent thirty-two point five just on the sixteen program.
For the hundred and ten projects we have done?
Yes, sir.
And, and I mean, I'm not going to extrapolate, like, since we've, we've got fifty percent of the projects done, then if we do another hundred, a hundred projects, that'd be another thirty million, that'd be sixty million dollars.
I'm sorry, I, I said that wrong. So far, we've spent, for the sixteen program, we've spent thirty-two minus the twelve point eight that we're asking for approval today.
Minus?
As a portion, right, so that would be twenty million, twenty million for the twenty-six.
So we spent twenty.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think something that might want to help you is, is that, um, get the SLOSS oversight committee to sit down with you and see, you know, to address, to take a look at all this.
Yes, sir.
I think that's another set of eyes, it wouldn't hurt. They're, they're really, it's a really great committee. And I think that, that, that may calm some of our fears, or it may generate more. So what I'll, I'll ask Al Summerer to get ahold of you and then sit down with the committee, and let's see what the, see what that looks like, okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, so we have a motion, we need a second. All right, in further discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Now, if I can find my place. Okay. The next item is request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract modification with Georgia Power Company, an amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and, uh, three hundred and sixty-one dollars for preliminary engineering provisions and relocation of facilities on Old Forty-One Highway Bridge over the CSX Railroad.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, call a question. Uh, some was. Commissioner Cupid, your, the button didn't work at that time. Area, passes five to zero.
Okay. And then our last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of traffic signal of mass arms, an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for rebuild of a traffic signal located at Mabelton Parkway at Factory Shoals Road on Mabelton Parkway pedestrian improvement space one.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion, call a question. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Erica. All right. Next, we have, uh, Support Services and Information Services first. Morning, Sharon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
She took all your time.
Okay, okay, can we just approve mine then? Okay, I tried.
Would it be that simple?
I tried. All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our first item this morning is a joint item with, um, Cobb Property Management. Data Center and Technology Modernization is a capital improvement project approved by the citizens of the two thousand and sixteen SLOSS as a project of the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program, which provides for the construction of a new data center. In May of two thousand and eighteen, the board approved indefinite delivery agreements with several architectural and engineering firms that responded to a request for qualifications for four architectural and engineering design categories, architectural, mechanical, roofing, and structural. Crofton Associates is included in these agreements and is a firm that has design experience with data center facilities. This project consists of architectural drawings and design of renovations to an existing county building for conversion to a new data center. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Crofton Associates in an amount not to exceed a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred for full architectural and engineering design services related to design and renovations for the new Cobb County Data Center, two thousand and sixteen SLOSS Project X zero zero one zero. Authorize the corresponding budget transfers and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our second item this morning is also concerning the new data center. On March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Commissioners authorized advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending more than one hundred thousand for professional services to provide expert technology services for assessment, technology, architectural design, infrastructure options, and data migration planning for the new Cobb County Data Center. The public hearing was held on April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. An RFI was submitted to vendors on the Georgia Department of Administrative Services and the General Services Administration contracts. Proposals were received from nine qualified vendors and reviewed by a committee consisting of members from Information Services, Property Management, and Purchasing. Presidio Network Solutions, LLC was selected based on their understanding of the project, proposed staffing levels of experience and past performance, project approach, and financial stability. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Presidio Network Solutions, LLC in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred for program management, technology assessment, development of technology design options, and delivery and migration planning for the new data center, two thousand and sixteen SLOSS Project X zero zero one zero, under provisions of the Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract nine 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 SPD dash SPD zero 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 six zero dash zero 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 two. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
So moved, I'm not going to repeat all that.
Discussion, call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sharon. Property Management?
All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property Management's got three items this morning. Our first item is, uh, forty-nine, and the Board of Commissioners approved contract with E.S.R. Incorporated in the amount of a one million, four hundred and four thousand dollars, four hundred and four thousand, eight hundred dollars for work related to the plumbing system for the Public Safety Training Center located at twenty-four thirty-five East West Connector, Ostel. A two thousand and sixteen SLOSS Project Program X ten fifty. Authorize the corresponding budgets and transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I brought up, um, yesterday, I know y'all, I had a question about forty-nine and fifty-one, and I just let you know, Scott and I talked this morning. Moving forward, what you're going to see is similar to what we have in the DOT agenda items when we have a project that has ongoing agenda items and dollars spent at various intervals. What you're going to see in, in, um, agenda items like this one is a similar accounting, so that, you know, if there is a starting number, that each agenda item that uses a portion of that money will show how much money of the original money is being used and how much is left. So that, because otherwise, you got to keep going back all these different agenda items and say, well, now, how are we doing on the spending? This way, it'll all be in the one agenda item.
Great idea. Okay, thank you. Okay, call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our second item, the Board of Commissioners approved supplemental agreement number one in the amount of nine million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars to the contract with Vats and Cook Company to establish the guaranteed maximum price of ten million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new medical examiner laboratory facility, a two thousand and sixteen SLOSS Project Program X ten thirty, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
Motion to approve, dockets getting closer.
Yes. Second, with pleasure.
Any discussion? Call a question.
All right, thank you. Our last item, the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Fire Systems Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars for the work related to the sprinkler system for the Public Safety Training Center located at twenty-four thirty-five East West Connector, Ostel, a two thousand and sixteen SLOSS Project Program X ten fifty, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid. Discussion, call a question. Passes five to zero.
Very good, thank you.
Morning, Michael. Community Development now, we have, um, agenda item?
Good morning, uh, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Michael Hughes, Cobb County Economic Development. We have one item on the agenda this morning to, um, request your approval of an incentive, economic incentive commitment agreement with NFIV-vA Atlanta Cumberland LLC, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Noble Investment Group. By way of background, the county has a targeted industry incentive program that allows for the provision of incentives, services, and business assistance to targeted growth clusters of industries that are considering Cobb County as a business location. In this case, the project classified as a growth core cluster is a travel and tourism, uh, growth cluster for the county. The project meets the eligibility criteria, uh, for these incentive, for this incentive program based on the applicant's commitment to create seventy jobs when twenty-five are required by ordinance. The fiscal impact, fiscal impact analysis prepared for this identifies a fiscal impact of one point one five million over a ten-year period, and only two hundred and fifty is required by ordinance. Thank you. This next, um, uh, slide just highlights some of the renderings of what the hotel project will look like in the Cumberland area. It is a dual branded hotel, Hilton Garden Inn, and a home to suites. The hotel facility will have about fifty-six hundred square feet of event and, uh, meeting space. There will be a restaurant that will serve breakfast and dinner, and then there will also be a rooftop bar that'll be open to the public, that will serve food and provide other related amenities. Just to give you a little bit of background on our incentive, economic development incentive review process, just wanted to confirm that we've gone through our concurrent member random process that was approved by the chairman, district commissioner, and the county manager earlier this year. A conditional incentive offer letter that was subject to the approval of this incentive agreement that you're considering this morning was issued on May twentieth. And again, the fiscal impact analysis was prepared, um, to assess the true revenues and, uh, expenses, uh, of this project to the county. And it, again, identified a net present value of one point one five million to the county over a ten-year period, and one point four six million dollars to the Cobb County Board of Education over that same period. The site is actually currently owned by the Cobb Marriott Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority, which is, which is tax exempt. Once this property is purchased, the property will be put on the county's tax rolls. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight a few unique development challenges for the site. The construction site is composed of seventy-five feet of deep fill from the construction of CPAC, which is a performing arts center and the I-75, and it's really not suitable for construction of a hotel. So all of that fill will have to be replaced. Additionally, the bedrock that extent is, um, on the site is unusually, um, far down, and so that there'll be the need to, uh, construct deep concrete piers in order to provide a, a, uh, stable foundation for the hotel project. Uh, and also, there's a limited size and unusual configuration of the property that's actually going to have to be used to cook to accommodate the construction of a new parking deck by the authority that'll be right next door. And then lastly, the, the, uh, location is adjacent to I-75, which is going to require the installation of a window system, uh, that's designed to reduce the vibration and noise from I-75. And with that background, staff is recommending your approval. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Rott.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As you know, I, I tabled this last, uh, month, or last meeting, I guess, because I had some questions about some parking issues, and those have all been resolved. I think the important things to note here is that the board spent a considerable amount of time putting this incentive package in place, and at the request of some of the commissioners, added to it the fiscal, um, analysis done by Georgia Tech, all of which has been done on this. It meets every single one of the requirements in the incentive program passed by the board. So I make a motion for approval.
Any comment, discussion? I actually have one question. For, is the hotel motor tax figured into the, um, the monetary values?
It is not.
It is not, okay. Curious about that. Okay, any other questions? Call a question. Passes four to one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community Resources?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I have two items this morning. The first one, earlier this year, the Compensation Committee completed a review of the available leave to employees for the birth of a child or adoption of a child. After completion of that review, the committee recommended the creation of a parental leave policy that provides six weeks of paid leave to full-time employees for the birth or adoption of a child. And at this time, we recommend approval of the attached policy as recommended by the committee to be effective the first pay period of October, uh, October sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid, that's, uh, your committee. Your department anyhow, put it that way.
Yes, my department versus committee. I know we've had considerable discussion among staff with this item. I just want to defer to our county manager for your feedback on this item before we vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. We did, um, have some good feedback that we received from both the department heads and agency directors. Originally, there was a, uh, somewhat of a concern about the length of time, I think, between what was generated through the Compensation Committee and where we're at today. I think provides, uh, a little bit better comfort level for the staff as it relates to the amount of time that we would have to either double up duties, reassign personnel to cover in the event of an absence, or in very, very limited circumstances, perhaps higher temporary, uh, labor. So with, with the new timeframe, in addition to the fact that I think Tony did a good job of clarifying that this occurs during a rolling twelve-month period, as well as also coincides with FLMA, FMLA, that all of the agency heads and department heads were comfortable, ma'am, with the, um, draft that's in front of the board today.
Okay, and was it estimated, um, was the fiscal impact estimated for?
Uh, there was no impact estimated, as the management team had reviewed the policy that they could, uh, operate within the existing budget.
So they would absorb the. So they would absorb the impact for their individual employees that fall under the policy?
Yes.
And it certainly is an attractive policy for those who are, who are impacted by a birth of a child or adoption of a child throughout, throughout their tenure here as an employee. And I know there was discussion amongst staff amongst the impact that this could have on them financially and operationally, but if this is something they feel that they can absorb, I think this is a win for the county. It's another attractive benefit for our employees to want to remain here and stay here, and it allows us to retain those employees without necessarily having a pay increase, but providing an attractive valuable benefit for them to have a better quality of life and knowing that they can spend precious time with their child once they're born or adopted. So this is something, particularly having two small children and going through employment and having children, this is something I wholeheartedly support. So with that, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item number fifty-three.
I have a question.
And we have a question, okay?
Sure. All right, Tony. You know, we heard a whole lot, or we hear a whole lot about our shortage in public safety. You know, we heard some numbers this morning. A lot of these other departments in the county, it's a little bit easier to double up or fill in for somebody when they're gone. How's that going to be done in the police department?
Commissioner Ott, it would more, it's probably going to be either reassignment or there would be some doubling up, similar to what we spoke with all the department heads about.
Okay, I just think that prior to October first, I know that's only a couple of weeks, that there needs to be discussion with the interim director, Kreider, and the chief as how we're going to address it in public safety, because what I don't want, I mean, I agree that it's, you know, it's a great benefit, and having a child is a huge impact on a family. And here comes Jackie.
Chairman Commissioners, it has been discussed with both Public Safety, Fire, and PD directors, and basically what we said was that we would leave it up to the discretion of those directors to have direct conversations with those employees who may take advantage of this so that they can work it out among themselves as to what's best for them. And so we believe that our employees will do the right thing and step up and say, okay, can you do this instead? Or can we work it around so it doesn't have an adverse impact on the department? So they have been a part of those discussions.
Right, because my concern would be, you know, and especially in public safety, we have a lot younger employees. A lot of them have families, and what I don't want to see is the benefit to one employee impacting the others where all of a sudden they're being told, well, you're going to have to work an extra shift, or you're going to have to work overtime.
Absolutely.
To fill in the gap.
And that's when the department head said that they would work with them to make sure it doesn't have an adverse impact on the organization. So that leaves it within the, the agency director and the department head's discretion to work with that employee, and we believe that we have an employee base that wants to, to do the best that they can for Cobb, and so we don't anticipate that, but we will address it as it comes.
And Commissioner Ott did want to mention also, it was a great question, I think that we were probably one of the few counties, when, you know, when we look at how can we do a better job of recruiting, particularly in public safety, I think we were one of the few counties that did not offer this as a potential benefit. So we're hoping that that might help us from a recruitment standpoint just a little bit.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burl.
Tony, I know we've had a lot of discussion about this. I understand this is a recommendation from the Compensation Committee, correct?
Yes.
One, one question is, or one clarification is that with the spouses included, that has to be done, there can't be just the person. Of course, when you have an adoption, you do have two parents, so I understand that that has to be done that way. It's just hard to grasp why if we have a male employee and his wife who works somewhere else actually gives birth to the child, he would get the same, the four weeks, correct?
That is the six weeks, yes, ma'am, and it would be treated, both employees the same, yes.
It's six weeks, I thought it was four weeks.
It's, it's, the proposed policy is for six weeks.
I thought it was four weeks, okay. And then they can still use their time from FMLA up to twelve weeks.
Yes, those would coincide with, with FMLA policy as provided under federal law.
The first six weeks would be included in that twelve weeks?
Yes, it would.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for the good work on that.
The second item is the approval of the Profit Sharing Plan Adoption Agreement and Addendum with ICMA RC Administration to accommodate the increase of, of the fifty percent match to a hundred percent match for the hybrid participants who are participating in the defined contribution plan. The agreement's needed to be approved in order to make that effective October the sixth for those participants. I would ask for the board's approval of those two items and authorize the chairman to execute those.
Commissioner Cupid.
I wholeheartedly move that we approve this Agenda Item.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have any further comment?
No, Chairman.
All right, on to appointments number fifty-five, and I just want to give some background here before, before I make a motion here on this one. Commissioner Gamble and I had a conversation this morning, and she has some good points about some earlier votes that were taken that didn't require me to require some additional time to think about the recommended, recommended appointments. And as I thought back over the two and a half years I've been here, this might be the first appointment where it won't be unanimous. So her question was, so why do I need more time on this one? And I said, well, as opposed to the previous ones, and it goes back to my point is that and all the other appointments, regardless of the nature of the appointment, the board seemed to be, have unanimity about it, and it wasn't a concern that are being addressed on this one. And I'm going to be the swing vote on this one. So I just need more time to sit down with this gentleman and talk to him, because this is a very important appointment. This Development Authority is getting more and more attention in this current day and age, and I want to make sure that my vote is an informed vote. And that's why I'm going to make a motion to continue this, this Agenda Item until the evening meeting of this month. Have a second. So comments, questions?
I would like to make the comment that I followed procedure and policy of the board in submitting this appointment. We then followed up with submitting a resume for everyone to review. At the Agenda Work Session yesterday, there were no comments or questions until after the executive session was held, when I was told you better walk the halls. Again, to me, this is coming across as pure patronage and politics at its worst on this board.
I'm not sure.
Again.
You're entirely your opinion, Commissioner.
On April ninth of two thousand nineteen, Commissioner Burl appointed a first-time appointee to this board. This board unanimously approved it. There was no contention, there was no discussion on the third floor. All I'm asking to do is appoint someone who many on the Development Authority view as very controversial, and on this board consider him controversial as well, because he holds a different opinion than those on this board. That is what the voters of District One expect. They expect somebody with a conservative view. They expect someone that's going to go out there and represent their interest, not the interest of a political engine. So my appointment, yes, he has a different view. He is an associate professor of economics. He understands this. Why are we so afraid to have someone with a different view be appointed to a board?
I think, I think every commissioner here is entitled to their opinion on matters brought forth on Agenda Items, and like I said, this is the first, this is the first appointment that I'm aware of where there wasn't unanimity. And since I'm going to be the swing vote on it, I just need more time to make sure that I can have the information to make an informed, informed vote. That's all I'm asking for here. So whatever, you know, whatever happened before or happened during this time, it's a different, the circumstances at the time are clearly different, because on this one here, we do not have unanimity on this, on this, on this appointment.
But if you go back to code, code only states, is the appointee a taxpayer of the county? He is.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Hagler, if I could get you to answer this question. The only other item that the code states is if the appointee is an officer or employee of the county. Mr. Hagler, is J.C. Bradbury an officer or an employee of the county?
Not that I'm aware of, Doug.
So again, the criteria that is out there for this appointment, my appointee makes.
It's not your appointment, it's a board appointment. It's your recommendation, but it's a board appointment. And the process was informally, and it's a good process, every member of this board was afforded the opportunity to make a recommendation to this board, but this is not, this is not an assigned appointment to the commissioners. So the process has worked in the past, and this time, there's a hiccup, there's a bump in the road. And since there seems to be, there doesn't seem to be consensus on this at the, at the time, I just need more time to talk to this gentleman to make sure that what my vote is, is something that I believe I take the appropriate time to talk to him, and when I vote on it, it's an informed vote. That's all I'm saying here.
And again, then I would beg to question, there wasn't a hiccup on your vote when Commissioner Ott in two thousand eighteen reappointed Karen Halcy, when Commissioner Cupid appointed Jamal McFadden for their first term, or when you appointed Kevin Nichols? So again, here, I am a new member on this board, and you are not treating me as equal member of this board as you have others.
I really respectfully disagree, because my, my, one of my responsibilities here, and I, I think it's important, is that I get a sense of where the board is on these of the Agenda Items, and if I sense there's going to be a problem, it makes no sense to bring an Agenda Item here, which I do not believe is going to get the support of the board. We're wasting our time by doing that. Right now, on this one here, I'm not saying this is not going to be approved, what I'm saying is, is that there needs, there needs to be more time on my part, since I'm the swing vote on this here, to decide what my vote's going to be.
And then again, if we are going to be changing the policy as to how we do appointments, and we're going to need an appointee to be interviewed, then our policy needs to be updated and to reflect that, and so every person on this board understands the new policy and guidelines that are being put forward.
It hasn't changed.
I don't remember interviewing Smith Peck before Commissioner Burl appointed him.
The circumstances, the circumstances were different there, Commissioner. Like I said, this is the first appointment.
Because you trusted the Commissioner Burrell's appointment, you're not trusting my judgment.
No, there are two, there are two commissioners here who are not going to support this appointment. All right? There are two who will, that I know, or I believe there will be. Since I'm the third vote, I'm not sure yet how I'm going to go, because I do not know this gentleman. And I think anyone who's sitting here, if you're having this conversation, it'd be common sense that before you make an important appointment of this nature to this very important board, that if there's some concerns that you might have about that, that you have those concerns addressed before you make the vote. That's all we're doing here.
Then I hope you do your due diligence in the next two weeks and meet with Mr. Bradbury.
I can assure you that this, this will come back again in two weeks for the board to be, to be voted on.
And will you require the other board members to interview him as well?
I'm not going to sit here and tell other board members how to do their job, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid.
When I joined the board and was preparing to make an appointment to the Development Authority, it was met with controversy. And there was clarification about appointments to this board or to this authority through our clerk's office and through legal, because even though, semantically or on paper, the board makes the appointment, there was this understanding of commissioners, which was asserted to me by commissioners, that each commissioner had the ability to make an appointment to the board. No one's hands are tied to have to approve anyone's appointment, but it was a given that the commissioner should have that ability. And when I came on board, I think, in a move that someone on the board wanted to make, they wanted to make that appointment for me, so there was some clarification to it. So with that understanding, I think that there tends to be some deference to who the commissioner wants to have on the board. And in this circumstance, I, I think it's less a matter of process, but more an issue of substance. I don't think there's ever presumed unanimity on any vote that we have, but I do believe that this is less of an issue of process about unanimity and more of an issue of the substantive nature of this appointment. And I don't, I have, I've not had any more background information on any other appointee than anybody in this board has made beyond their resume, and faith and trust that this person is confidently being suggested by the commissioner. So I do believe that this is being treated uniquely. And I also believe you still need three out of five for, for it to move forward, so it doesn't hurt for the chairman to have opportunity to weigh in on this matter, but I think that it sends a chilling effect if we're expecting that there's unanimity on something as important as this, because if something is as important as the work of the Development Authority, we're hoping that each person is able to bring objective thought to it based on the confidence of the person who was elected to, to represent their constituency. And I've become increasingly concerned by the dialogue about this particular appointment when it seems to be limiting some level of objectivity to the doling out of significant dollars for incentives to establish this county. And I just hope that we can just reflect on the, the nature of not only that board, but this board, and knowing that we do not come to every matter in unison. There's some people who may disagree at times, but we respect the commissioner for their disagreement because of the amount of time and effort that they spend in developing their perspective and their views, their perspectives being their views. And I'm thinking that we should expect that same professionalism to be brought to whichever appointment that, that the commissioner may make to a board. So with that, Commissioner Gamble, I'm, I'm supportive of us maintaining our regular process of allowing the commissioners to be able to suggest appointments to the board, and I'm hoping that the message that we're not trying to send is that we're expecting the board to be of unanimous thought, or people on an authority to be of unanimous thought, to be able to conduct the business of this county.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rock.
I just, I'm going to agree with one part of what Commissioner Cupid said, okay? And there is never a time where it is wrong if a commissioner asks for more time. Last meeting, I tabled something that just got approved, five oh, that totally met every single part of the county code about incentives. It was, it was giving money advantages to a business, but I tabled it because I said I needed more time. And, and I, I take a little bit of exception to the, to trying to accuse the chairman of having other reasons for asking for more time. If, if he determined that he is going to be the third vote, and he's asking for more time, then this board needs to give any commissioner the time to do their due diligence to make a decision that they think is right. And, and I just think that it's wrong to make public accusations when a commissioner asks for extra time.
And Commissioner Ott, to respond to that, when you asked for your extension on your Agenda Item, you did so at the work session. The chairman approached me four minutes before the start of this meeting, informed me he had three, two other votes to hold this Agenda Item. Four minutes before the meeting started, he approached me.
You know what? If, if everything could happen at the Agenda Meeting, then we wouldn't have the meeting the Friday before where the Agenda is created. Things don't happen exactly on Mondays. I mean, I wasn't here yesterday, I was fine. I mean, I wasn't here yesterday, I was fine. Okay? So there are, I mean, you know, it's a little bit difficult to have a conversation with any of you if I'm in the air. So there are going to be times where conversations may happen after the agenda meeting. And, you know, just to think that everyone's going to have their mind made up on Monday by the end of the meeting at 10:30 is just, there's, you can't think that way. You know, the chairman came to you and said that he had concerns. He could have waited until the meeting, but he didn't. He talked to you first. And, and so, you know, to try to think that everything is going to be resolved Monday before, doesn't work that way. How many times, I mean, you know, we have a green page in here. I didn't know we were doing this. Okay, I don't have a problem. I think what Commissioner Cupid did for her proclamation was a great thing. I mean, you know, getting kids to read is awesome. But this was done after the fact. So to say that something has to happen at the agenda meeting is just, that's, that's not the way things work.
Well, and I understand, but that was at our agenda meeting yesterday. But the, the fact of it is, is that when I sent out my appointment card, that appointment card contained all the contact information for my appointee. The chairman could have easily obtained that information, or any of the commissioners could have obtained that information, and contacted him directly and started asking questions. So again, two weeks ago, it was on August 29th, is when that appointment card went out. I understand the chairman was out of town on vacation, but he has been back.
That's not the issue.
And again, if you needed to reach out and ask him questions, why didn't you not go out and ask those questions prior to, four minutes before the start of this meeting?
Because I didn't know until yesterday that there were two votes in opposition to the appointment. And I, and I offered you the courtesy of saying, I suggest that you walk the halls to make sure you have the votes for this. I could have just let you sit out here and hang. We could have voted on this, and I could have done the same thing. So Commissioner? I think we've made our point here, all right? I know you're not happy about this, and, you know, we're just going to have to sit here and agree to disagree on this one. Sorry.
Well, we can agree to disagree, but when I'm told the opposition to my appointee is because they don't like what has been written in the M D J, that is not a substantiated reason to deny the appointee.
Look, I, I, I don't know, I don't know where you're getting your comments from. All I know is, is that I knew there were two votes in opposition yesterday, and I didn't know about a third, there might have been a third. And so I asked you to lock the hall to make sure you have the votes. That was, that was a matter of professional courtesy to you. And this morning, since I realized there was in fact, two votes against it, all right? I'd rather sit here and tell you at this meeting that I was going to ask to continue, I offered you again the first courtesy. I realize it was the last minute, it was the last minute thing, but it wasn't intentional. It was a matter of how the circumstances rolled out. So I'll continue to do business that way as soon as I know something, even if it's the last minute. I made a commitment to everybody here, no surprises. And sometimes that commitment to be honored has to happen at the last minute when I finally have the facts at hand to provide you what I know. And that's what happened this time. But I think we should also remember that, you know, we handle anywhere from 50 to 100 agenda items every, every meeting. So let's not have one agenda item color the nature of how we do business here. 99% of the things we do here, we discuss fully. When we present them here, is they're approved because we have all the background. This is one that didn't happen that way. It's not a perfect world. And I don't think it's unreasonable to anybody in this, in that, that knows how to do this business, that when any one of us asks us for more time, it's for a good reason, and it's not personal. It's professional. So that's all I'm saying.
I don't, you know, we have a retreat coming up in a couple of weeks for us to come together and figure out how to, I guess, better work together as a board. But, I mean, just in defense of Kelly, I've seen agenda items come before here where we've asked for time, and they've still moved quickly through. Even when we knew beforehand there was significant disagreement on a very significant matter that I think made us look really bad as a board. So it's like, I just hope that, that that is going to be our approach for this matter, that that's our approach for matters moving forward. Because in an ideal world, we'll all have time to vet things well and be competent in our vote.
Okay. All right, with that, I call a question. All right, so it passes 5 to 0 to hold. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, our last agenda item for public comment is appointment to the Hospital Authority Right. All right, Commissioner, I mean, County Manager, I'd like you to come up here, explain what this process is all about. It's, it's a little confusing, it's not a little confusing, it's very confusing to a lot of people.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman. There are two processes that we follow when we relate, or when we appoint folks to, to boards related to our hospital activities. This was largely due, I think, to a change in state law, or at the urging of the state legislators, when the authority was created. We have one appointment, we have one process that relates to appointments to the Cobb Hospital Authority, and then we also have a separate process related to the Kennistone Hospital Authority. In this particular instance, the, the process that we are following this morning, we are provided a list of candidates from the Kennistone Hospital folks. And out of those particular suggestions to them, we select the appointments that will be made. Conversely, if we were looking at the Hospital Authority appointments, we normally provide a list of candidates to the Hospital Authority, and then they in turn approve those, they select members from a list that is provided by the board to the authority. In this instance, we are selecting members that have been presented to us from the authority. I believe that in the agenda item, it's post two and seven, and there are, I'm sorry, post one and post seven, thank Commissioner Ott. And in those particular instances, I believe that we have had candidates recommended for both posts. And today, it would be up to the Board of Commissioners to select one of the three nominees for post one, and one of the four nominees, I think, for post seven.
Okay. So my understanding is, is that, before I make the motion here, that there's consensus on the board for Dr. Thomas Gearhart for post one, and Ed Richardson for post seven. Do I understand that? Is that reasonable? Okay, with that, I make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approve their appointments to the Hospital Authority of Cobb County as follows. Dr. Thomas Gearhart for post one, and Ed Richardson, post seven, for a term balance to expire on August 7th, 2022. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, comment. Press your comment, Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just have two, and I think Brad's going to put up something here to show a picture. But September is National Recovery Month, and I, I know a lot of you know that I've been very heavily involved in dealing with the opioid crisis here in Cobb. So the National Recovery Month is sponsored by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, and National Observers held every September to educate Americans that substance use treatment and mental health services can enable those with mental and substance use disorders to live healthy and rewarding lives. It, it benefits millions of Americans who are in recovery, both for mental and substance use disorders. So it's a great opportunity to remind everyone that folks are out there that need our help, need our attention. It's now in its 30th year. It celebrates the recovery gains made by those in recovery, and we celebrate with them. It helps to manage health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. It also works to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices. As part of the 30th anniversary, they're introducing the new logo, which you see on the screen here. The new Recovery Month logo features an R symbol representing R for recovery, and the need to support the millions of individuals who are proud of living their lives in recovery. So each September, tens of thousands of prevention, treatment, and recovery programs around the country celebrate. So I would just ask you to recognize the work that they do, and, and the great help that they get people back into society. The last thing, tomorrow is 18 years since September 11th. So I would just ask that, I, I know it changed everyone's lives, probably no more than what in my industry, you know, it had significant changes, but I would just ask that, at 8:46 tomorrow morning, that you just think of what happened. That was when the first plane hit the World Trade Center.
Very appropriate words, Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank firefighter engineers Aaron Sekel and Cender for coming this morning. And be sure and watch the video and vote for Cender. Also, we had two veteran adoptions over the weekend. 20 years of service, Mr. Cointis in the U.S. Army, thank you for adopting the terrier poodle mix. And then Mr. Price, 14 years of service in the Navy. And congratulations on your finding your new forever friend. And this is a boxer from the shelter. I'd also like to give a shout out to the M D J for the publicity in the paper on Sunday, recognizing our check presentation at the last meeting. Superior, without these, without Superior Plumbing's generosity with these, this program would not be possible. And so far, we have 115 adoptions. So we have a few more to go.
Jay should be very worried.
It's really caught on now. So any more coverage you want to give us, we'll take. And congratulations to Holy Transfiguration Church on their 30th anniversary. We had a great time Saturday night at their gala, the chairman and I, with Father Papa Giorgio and Steve Santos, the parish council president. So congratulations on 30 years in our community. And also, congratulations to Sandy Plains Baseball. Nope, almost. I had some lessons from Marvin Freeman here, a former Braves player. I think he lives in your district, Commissioner Cupid. He's a great guy. He gave me some lessons in the dugout prior to throwing out the first pitch together. And he, of course, made it right in the glove, and mine bounced just right before home plate. But it was fun. What?
It was a slider.
Yeah. But Sandy Plains Baseball was celebrating their 50th anniversary on Saturday. And I'm always honored to, to be with them for fall ball and spring ball and throw out the first pitch. Great words, Commissioner Ott. May we never forget September 11th, 2001, tomorrow. Constitution Day, as you heard this morning, is next Tuesday, the 17th, and we'll be celebrating all week with constitutions in the schools. And also, a happy 72nd birthday to the U.S. Air Force next Wednesday, September 18th. Just a reminder for the road construction at Sandy Plains and Ebenezer, contractors planning to do their final pipe crossing at the Sandy Plains Road Construction Location today until 3:00 P.M. There will be a police officer present to override the traffic signal. If the work is not completed by 3:00, DOT alert will be issued via newsletter and social media with the reason and time of the delay. We appreciate your continued patience as this work is imperative to prepare for the paving that is tentatively scheduled for Monday, the 16th. Thank you for your patience, and Erica has promised me this project will be done by December of this year. Next up, on October 8th, here, in this room, we will have, I'm sorry, at the Wellness Center, Powder Springs Senior Wellness Center, we will have the How to Do Business with Cobb Seminar from 5:30 to 7:00, Tuesday, October 8th. And you can register with my assistant, Inger Everhart, at cobbcounty.org. And it is free, but we do need you to register so that we have a head count. And you can learn to how to be a vendor with Cobb County and the Cobb Schools. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble.
First, I'd like to invite everyone to join us tonight at Carrabba's Italian Grill on Barrett Parkway for dinner to benefit Blue Thanksgiving. This is a weekly event that Carrabba's will be hosting, where they will give 10% of your total check to Blue Thanksgiving, which will help benefit our public safety officers, not only in our community, but the surrounding communities. This is from 4:00 to 10:00 P.M. tonight. And a special thanks to Kimberly Peace Hill, the president of Blue Thanksgiving Incorporated, a Georgia nonprofit company, charity for arranging this event with Carrabba's. I would also then like to acknowledge our 4-H department. Our Cobb County 4-H received several accolades from U G A this past week. This is a great reflection on the ongoing hard work of our 4-H extension staff. Thank you very much. We also saw a 22% increase in project achievements over the 2000, 2019 school year. We'd like to also thank Hope Warren, Director and County Extension Coordinator, for all she has done to see these numbers increase. And lastly, my town hall meeting is going to be this Thursday, September 12th, from 6:30 to 8:00 P.M. at the West Cobb Senior Center on Dallas Highway.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I can't believe that this is going to be my fourth year of holding annual HOA bootcamps, and I encourage the public to come out and sign up to attend that. It's going to be on Saturday, September 21st, 2019. And you can go to my website on the county's, on the county web page to sign up for that event. There's free admission. Also, want to thank Cobb Link for all of your efforts with the new changes that will be taking place, or that have taken place from Sunday, September 8th. We have been working very hard to put forward system changes, and the one that I'm most proud about is the Sunday service, which kicked off this past weekend. I think this will increase mobility for not only our constituents, but those who need that service to work on Sunday. And it'll just be aiding in the economic vibrancy of our county to be able to provide that service. So Erica Parish, please, tell your staff, I see you back there, Eric. Please tell your staff that I'm extremely grateful for all of their hard effort in moving this forward, and I look forward to seeing the stats that come out of the use of that service. That's all my comments, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're adjourned. With that, we're adjourned.